All right.
All the order of the Wednesday, February twelve, twenty twenty five ZBA meeting. And roll call please.
Your stock. Blue. I've lens absent mean here. Smith absent Swanson absent. Legaman.
Here.
And we need approval of the minutes from our December eleventh meeting.
I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll make the second.
Motion by blue second by me. Your stock. Yes, I'm sorry. Is there any additions, changes or corrections? All right. Roll call. Thank you. There's that.
Yes.
Blue.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Legaman.
Yes. Approval of the minutes from our ZBA meeting, January eighth, twenty twenty five. Rachel Borst. Blue.
I'll click it.
Motion by Legaman second by Baluch. Why don't you ask me?
Were you going to do any correcting, sir?
Oh, yes.
No corrections. All right. Roll call, please, Joe.
Thank you.
Blue. Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Legaman.
Yes.
Their stock.
Yes. New business ZBA twenty twenty five dash zero zero three discussion or recommendation for approval of a replat for the properties located at one zero three zero seven and one zero three seven five Clearwing. Advocate Joshua Petrie.
That's me kind of instead of I'm Jeff Lincoln held with Arc Design Resources. The applicant's agent on the application forms. I'm here to talk about Clearwing and and the next time actually. Don't even be sworn in or anything. This board.
I mean you.
Yeah. I got a little out of myself. Do you swear to tell all truths and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Perfect. Go ahead.
Okay. While we're a little informal here, I guess there is one. Oh, Evan is online. Great. This property is in the middle of Clearwing subdivision. It was known as Lot A in the original plat. Having been the engineer for the Petrie family since, you know, a lot, lot, many, a few, many years ago, I do know that Lot A, the original intent was of somewhat of a, a community center area for the development. That never happened. At this point, I can tell you that I went through and I counted up the number of discrete owners of individual or multiple buildings within the development. I stopped counting at twelve. Twelve different entities own either one or multiple buildings within the development. So the chances of all twelve getting together and saying, oh yeah, we're gonna just spend money and develop a community center for something that's already cooking along is pretty much nil. So my client happens to own this property is paying taxes on it such as they are and would like or approach the village about coming up with a plan unit development to put in twenty four units within this little open lot. These would be not the same as the units that are out there now, which are kind of stacked for families where one person lives on the bottom and then somebody on top of them and then and somebody else next door. These are more townhome style units. You, if you're been on the board for a few years, you would know that these are similar to the unit cities proposing in Hawks Point subdivision. And I made four copies. Which there's four reviews, so it works out perfectly. These were also submitted.
Thank you.
For the PUD.
These are the.
These are the town.
Oh, the.
Yeah.
Yep. And this you send us.
I, I sent that an email to you earlier, Joe. Recent, but I, I know it was part of our original sub. So what we're proposing is one, two, three, four, five, four family buildings and then one, three family building. And we've got a little private driveway in here to service all the units. There's actually no direct garage coming out to the street. We've got the UPS mail or USPS mail box out front. We've got some supplemental parking as was required by staff to meet the zoning criteria. We've got sewer and water extensions, which the village engineer has been reviewing. And I guess basically just, you know, I would say quite a significant amount of open space as compared to, if you want to say these individual lots, like right next door, where you can see like this, this building here and it looks like that and you know, this would be the lot with six.
I know we're recording this and there's new client Tuesday, but I really think that you're talking about.
Yeah, just, just, I'm just comparing the open space on the, for these twenty four units versus like any, any individual lot that's that's in the development. Unfortunately, I probably should have plotted this drawing with an aerial photo. So the reason there's going to be a replat is because Lot A, it would need to be replanted as a PUD and then we're adding in some water sewer easements, a public circulation easement. And so that's the reason for the replat. I guess we're kind of talking about the first two items on the agenda at the same time. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have right now before we move forward.
And any thoughts or anything to add?
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. I think you did a pretty, pretty great job of giving an overview of the project. You're correct that the replat is needed for turning it from that, that community center space, that open space that's required for subdivisions, turning that back into a developable plot, a developable parcel is what we're looking at for this first approval tonight. So the packet shows, the, the staff report in the packet shows that if it got replatted to a developable lot, it would meet all the residential, mixed residential multifamily standards in the zoning code for all the bulk stuff, lot size, lot width, lot depth. The setbacks would be able to be accommodated. The real tricky part of this one is that this is the subdivisions required open space. So to get around that and make it a developable parcel, the ZBA is going to have to come up with some sort of justification or some sort of hardship or I think the, the codes specific language is a particular difficulty. So the staff report in the packet lists three difficulties that I think are sufficient that you guys could make tonight to allow this replat into a developable lot. So that one, first one would be the village need for affordable and varied housing types. This is obviously, as Jeff alluded to, it's creating more townhome type developments, smaller, more, could possibly be more affordable, accessible for different types of people, different types of families. The second one is that the parcel size is insufficient for any sort of meaningful recreation. It's about two acres. It's if a community center or something was going to go there, it probably would have happened already. This is, this plat was recorded in two thousand and four. So we're twenty years into this and there, there's been no community center and again, as Jeff mentioned, there are twelve different owners plus in this subdivision. So creating something there is really going to be an uphill battle. The third one is just the general surrounding development pattern characterized by large lots and a lot of existing open space. This development here would have a lot of open space. So that community dedicated open space is really kind of a moot point with the amount that residents have to use on their own parcels at this, at this moment. So one or a mixture of those, the, you guys are going to have to use to justify waiving the park and open space dedication requirements in the subdivision. Like I said.
Shouldn't the applicant be telling us rather than us telling him? Shouldn't the applicant be telling us why he, why he's doing this?
You could, you could definitely ask that. I mean, it's more uh, it, it, it's not always something that we want to have the applicant say, hey, we need the, we need a waiver for the parkland or open space dedication for this reason. Because this is, since we're circumventing the code to such a large degree that we're getting rid of a park or open space dedication that's in a subdivision. That, that justification really should come from the ZBA because it's less so the applicant asking for a specific waiver where the ZBA finds something that but for this waiver, the, any sort of development wouldn't happen. And we see that there's like a common public good to getting, you know, or waiving this requirement.
So the requirement is that it has, it has to be, I'm sorry, explain to me what the requirement is again.
Sure. So right now, the, anytime there's a new subdivision planted, there is a, a formula that gives you the required amount of open or parkland space that the developer has to dedicate. I, this right here is two acres. Since then, there's been code updates and running the formula that we have now through the Clearwing subdivision, it gets up to a, a little more than six acres. So this is deficient already with where we're at in the code. The, to get around this and to make this a developable lot, we have to come up with one of those justifications for affordable housing. The parcel size is too small and it's not being used or just that the surrounding development pattern allows for a lot of open space.
Was the original intent for a community center or green space park area? Somebody said community center. Was that what was in the code that there had to be a community center?
It wasn't in the code, but it could have been in the parcel doc or in the plat documents. I've seen open space. Maybe there could have been talk or there could have been plans to put some sort of community center there at some point, but straight, I mean strictly code based, it only has to be open space or park space. And.
Current code correct.
What was that?
I'm asking the current code.
Correct. Yeah.
I mean, Jeff can't address.
Yeah, I'm waiting for it.
I'm waiting for it to be done.
If, when he says he's done all.
And if it's, if it's an open space, it's supposed to be like for public access or not?
Uh, yeah, for residents of the subdivision, you, they could dedicate it to the village and then it could be more public, but often it's not, people aren't checking. If you live in the subdivision or anything, it's, it's more public space. Yes.
But I mean, I guess the property owner isn't.
But maybe, I think we can answer. I think maybe have Jeff, if you don't mind Evan, address this because this is a older subdivision we had prior to our new.
Yeah, thank you. I guess just for a point of clarification, I don't believe that I ever actually saw the staff report sent to me. So I'm kind of hearing this information at the same time you guys are, or actually maybe after you, since you've already seen the staff report and read it. This subdivision was built in the early two thousands, as alluded to, I distinctly know that what, whatever plat this was in, Outlet A was listed as some community center lot or community outline. It was never intended to be a public park. Had it been intended to be a public park, it would have been dedicated to the village at that time. In fact, the only parkland that I know to be developed, to be dedicated within this whole master area of well, the, just the annexations of all the lands from, through the Petrie family was the land at the very far north end of Crystal Chicory Ridge subdivision. There's like an eighteen acre park up at the, up at the end of that. That's the only parkland that has, to this date, other than you'll see in our next slide, been dedicated as a public park. There's zero parkland dedicated in Clearwing. There was zero parkland dedicated in Crystal Hills. And then Chicory had the large park up, up at the north with the river access. So I, I don't.
Quickly on that and point, just so I'm sure this board is very familiar with that, but just to make it, everybody understands what I'm talking about here. This was the old Petrie annexation agreement. It's no longer in place. But this is when these were initially planted or under the old annexation agreement.
So this was.
Time there was not a requirement, when this was all planted, to have public park.
Right. It's prior to the code in two thousand and six.
Correct. Which is why this is, I don't know, recently, I haven't seen two thousand and six, but this, this was not public park land. No. But that's all future ones do. And we absolutely, the Petries have to comply with all the new codes for new subdivision plats. When they were doing these subdivisions, but this was prior to all of that.
The new one. The new one, the property owner would be responsible for keeping it.
If they were to be, if they were to retype this lot, but if they were going to create a new plat, they would have to impact these. They would have to do parkland. They would have to do all those new requirements.
Cause that's what I'm looking at is we don't want in the future when we're designating open space and then enough time goes by and they say, well, nobody built a park there or a community center. So now let's just develop it.
Correct. Our new, our program is, if you don't mind. If you don't mind, but our program as it currently stands, that, what Evan was talking about, that formula for open space or for open space, but for public dedication, parkland dedication, we actually have to dedicate to the village of Roscoe, either extender is a formula that's in there. It's a good sizable amount, either actual park, usable park space or you have to donate money, you have to give the village money in lieu of that to be used purely for the building of those parklands and purchasing of those parklands. So that is in the current code for new plats and that comes, that goes into effect when the properties are planted. So that's a little bit different than this. Well, now this was in, when this was planted, we had the annexation agreement. So that's why there's not a parkland dedication as part of that. But so yeah, going forwards, like you, like you said, going forward. Yeah. So those part of land is dedicated to the village and given to the village as village owned property or.
So it can't just be green space.
Correct. This is, this is different than, than that. Yeah, correct. Now, going forward, we've had a few going forward, even smaller subdivision plats. When they were creating those plats and you've seen those few of those smaller ones come through the last couple of years. They have, they've had to give us either parkland on their flats. And when you have over two lots, it's not worth that. Or they have to provide that contribution. It's all calculated in our organelles. They have to provide us with that money in lieu of that to help offset that, that park uses. So that's what the village put in place many years ago at this point. So they, they would ensure that we had parklands.
Cause I was just thinking to enhance the area for the community is if you could do both. You know, cause you said open space, but I don't know if that's enough open space for the whole, you know, subdivision. It's just, is, if you could do something where you could develop it with, you know, enhance it for the community, give them some open space plus add some housing. Could, is that a possibility?
Well, I guess I'm going to couch this as saying like, I think that it's, you should think of this as like basically, and it's an undeveloped lot in the subdivision. It's, it was never and the, the intent was never to be a public park. It was all, it was never gifted to the village. It was, I mean, obviously by virtue of nothing being built there for twenty years, people have usurped its use to be, you know, hey, look out the back of, you know, out the back of my window here. I don't, I don't see another house behind me. So that's nice for them. I'm not denying that. But what the, the, what my client is, he, he owns this property. It was originally designated as a, a community built center, whatever that would be. Maybe it's some building where people could host a birthday party or something and have a parking lot out front. I don't, I don't, I don't know what, whatever the use might have been at the time, but what he's, what we're saying is like, I own this property. The, the chances of a community center being constructed here are zero. So I would like to take this lot and repurpose it into some additional multifamily, which is a slightly different character than what's in there, but yet it does provide a little bit less density than what all the, the rest of the surrounding lots are. So that, that's the, that's the proposal. We have, we own, we own a vacant lot. It will never be developed for whatever the plat, the plat had use was. We would like to repurpose that lot.
So my question is, when we initially, back in two thousand and four, whenever this was, and you probably don't know the answer to this, maybe some of you do, I don't know, but when this land was originally zoned for multifamily, was it based on the understanding that there was going to be a community center put in there?
I never seen anything with community center. All, all I've seen is what's listed on there is that open, that open space, but as like, I think, open common space, whatever it's called on there.
Cause, cause the community center wasn't going to happen unless somebody was committed to, to building it. I mean, you can't just, oh, we'll leave it open and then maybe somebody will build a community center.
Yes. See, my only other knowledge about that, she's, say, I'll try to as much as background as I know on this, but honestly, decision, what you want to do is, it's you guys, just I mean that, but this was, I think that whole subdivision was condos initially, it was going to be condos, was, was originally discussed and planned as, or intended to be condos. And I think that that sort of mastered all condos by one condo association. I think that never really happened actually after the initial, initial parts of it. So I think it was, you know, these multifamilies, but they were, I think it was going to be like a condo association. I think what Jeff's pointing out that it was probably going to be like a public owned space and I don't think that ever evolved into that.
Is there an association now?
To my knowledge, no. I, I don't, I don't really know the answer to that. I, like I said, I just started looking up who, like, however many other entities own some of these buildings and I stopped at twelve. So I, I don't, I don't believe there's any official association. It's not, it's not the character of these developments over here off of Roscoe Road that any of them have an official association.
Evan, do you have anything more? Do you have, I sort of stopped halfway through there. I think you had any more discussion or?
I guess maybe my question is on the staff report, was there, I mean, did the staff recommend approval? I'm not, I'm not even aware of that. I mean, I, I would think that they did based on the meetings and conversations that we've had.
Right. Yeah, we, we had, we recommended approval and then just to provide updated plat documents to us and then revised plat must be on file with Winnabago County before any improvements are made. That's the only, those are the only two conditions.
Okay. Yeah. So that's, that's within the character of our initial meetings with the village, working through some back and forth, you know, as far as our, as our plans have developed and I guess what we've landed on here is the final plan that staff would support and and I would say that we're, we're willing to move forward on.
Did I catch you saying you own the property?
No, I do not. I represent Josh Petrie.
That's right. Yeah, right. Thought you said you own the.
Uh, oh, the collective we. My client.
Okay. Um, so. I'm back to, in the case of replating this particle, the zoning board will appeal and the village board must first. And it gets back to, we have to come up with one of these three. I feel bigger. The applicant should tell us, tell us about it. It's up, it's up to the applicant to say it. We're always writing something for somebody else. We have to use one of those three things to justify this. Tell us which one you want us to use. That's what I, I maybe I'm wrong thinking that.
I think the thinking is that it, it coming from the ZBA has a little bit more validity because a developer can the developer and applicant can put something in, but if it comes from the ZBA as justification rather from the applicant, I, I think that it, it, it's meant to have a little bit more. I don't know, validity is the right word, but a little bit more of authority.
The findings of the CPA regardless, right? So you can absolutely ask, you know, the applicants to provide ideas or samples, so we have special uses or variances, but it's your findings, right? This is your decision.
Do we?
And it goes to the board eventually.
Do we think that it meets any of these criteria? That's what we have to decide.
Yeah, that's.
Is it, do we think there is a need for affordable housing to, to rezone this and take that public space away? Do we think that it's parcel size is insufficient for the public recreation? Or do we think that it's the surrounding development patterns? What's that?
That's just the general layout and size and width and everything of the surrounding parcels. That, that justification.
When this was planted, there was not the requirement for park or open space. We're asking to replant it and not follow the new standards of open spaces park, correct? Isn't that what we're being asked right here?
That has to be grandfathered in, I guess.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's a lot right now. Well, the reason why we go through the planning process, why you're here to have this discussion and ultimately the village board, I mean, you make the recommendations, ultimately the village board will have to make a decision on it. Is because of that sort of title, that label on that plat that says this is, you know, open uh, open area.
I notice also south of that lot, down on Mosaic, there's other open lots. Was that owned by Petrie?
Well, when you get to the.
Other big.
Very south. We get to the very south end.
Very south.
I, I believe that's the detention area.
Hmm, no. Well, it's tough to see from the picture, but there they don't look like detention. The roads going around like they do, but I guess it could be.
Joe, do you think it would help if I put up a, the Google street view of the?
You know, street view or yeah, watch the street view better or. Winches.
Here. Oh, I don't know if I have screen sharing.
Um, and when we talk about affordable housing, we haven't heard any numbers. So what are we talking about? Affordable housing leads to what?
Well, it could be, it could be, it could not necessarily affordable housing per se, but it could be different housing types. So I mean, these are townhome, more stacked units versus the, uh, the walk up four unit buildings that are in the subdivision right now. So here, let me.
We're not proposing any sort of low income or section eight housing. I think what he's referring to is just that it's, it would be, it would be market rate housing. These units are they're a little bit smaller than normal. I think they're like fourteen hundred square feet. It's on your, it's on those drawings I handed out to you. But it's, uh, yeah. Single car garage. Two bedrooms upstairs, living quarters downstairs.
So I, I is Clearwing, is that all apartments or some of it condos? I don't even know.
It's like there's duplexes on the outside.
I think that on the far east end, there's some there's some sort of duplexes or, and like all owned by some one entity on the far east. But I.
I think most of those are rental rentals versus actually own condominiums. So.
I'm pretty certain that all, everything you're looking at on the screen there is all going to be rental units. Those are those four families that are up, up and down.
Those are all rental. See, these are the lots downstairs here. That's probably detention, I suppose.
Yeah, I guess I feel like it's not the resident's fault that it was never made more easily accessible as far as for like a path for, you know, walking your dog or, or anything even. It's just, and if it isn't mowed on a regular basis, then it's even less accessible. So I don't see where, cause I saw where there was a comment that it was, it wasn't mowed enough for the kids to play baseball or something. And it's like, well, who's going to do that? You know?
Yeah, I know. This is, I mean, I say, this is so it's a strength for me. Yes, it's a strength. Yeah, I know, this is, I mean, actually, this is, so it's a strange, yes, it's a strange uh, property that we're doing. They're requesting to redevelop it, but obviously it ultimately comes down to what does ZBA, what the village board, what you guys want to do with it. But yeah, this is a, you know, right now is it, it is this private property, private lot owned by, um, uh, Josh Petrie. At this point. So it is, is private property, but I know people do go on to it, but that's why we're sort of in this situation of trying to see what we can do with this. Usable and useful again, um, it, you know, it's not a public property, it's not a park, it's not, um, you know, it's not owned by the community association, uh, it's, it's an empty lot, so.
And note, and those three justifications that are in the staff report, those are just ideas. If the ZBA can come up with something else that dictates the, that this lot A is, in some way, shape or form, a particular difficulty that, um, it can and should be turned into a developable lot. I, it doesn't have to be beholden to those three that are in there.
I guess that would be our, our contention, like, without having seen the staff report again. It's a, it's a private lot owned by my client. It's not, it's never going to be developed into a community center. We would like to redevelop it with these, this, this townhome idea, which is a different type of unit than what's out there, and it does provide more open space than the current lots surrounding it.
I just keep going back to though, I mean, the applicant owned all of the other parcels, right? And created this lot and stated, probably at the ZBA meeting, that it was going to be a community center if we agreed to do multifamily in all of these other areas, right? And now, after so much time after not building a community center, now he's saying, well, now I want to build twenty-four more housing units.
Fair, fair point. I don't have recall memory that, that good to know what happened twenty-one years ago, but, um, yeah. Suffice to say, it's, it's not, it's not going to be a community center. I mean.
But that's what I'm saying, if you could do both, if we could, if you could, cause right now it's not being maintained as a public space at all, really. So, if you could do that and develop some of it, I don't know, do you have to have that many units?
Well, that's what he, that's.
That's what he wants, right? He's made, that he wants to get as many as he can.
What would be the uh, of the two acre lot, what would be the percentage of parkland we'd have to dedicate per the?
Well, I don't know, is it, is there, is it, to be just open accessible space, there has to be, I don't know. I was just thinking if, if we could find a way to do both, you know, but I would feel more comfortable that way, but.
Yeah, I don't think there's a, I don't think there's a formula for something as small as that, but, I mean, the next, the next uh, item on the agenda, I'm just thinking, is the PUD for this, where the ZBA has power to negotiate this kind of thing. Where you can say, I mean, the staff report recommends approval of the PUD as well, in the next item. But you have the ability to negotiate a little bit to get something like more open space, or the higher design standards or something. So.
And I see a trustee in the audience here, I will know, all subject to board approval, so before we worry about that. But, yeah, I know we've got a couple trustees in the, in the audience.
Well, it's, I mean, I'm in a position to, for my client to say yes to everything that I presented. So if you guys are thinking that it needs to be negotiated and something different needs to happen, then maybe I would suggest a layover.
I'm not sure that the board appreciated them. Exactly what we're gonna be doing here, this, and what the details were. Cause this is a tough one. I, I feel like somebody owns the property, they got a right to develop it, but on the other hand, we're not doing that anymore. Wanting park space for everybody. And then.
And in the future, however, it's just like other zones.
Right, with code enforcement.
It's like, okay, so you say to a developer, we want this, this, this has gotta be green space, but then if nothing ever happens, and nobody comes back and says, hey, you need to do what you said you were gonna do. So there might be some zoning changes, we, we need to make sure for the future too.
I think he's, he's making a statement that nothing will ever happen with it, that's as long as Petrie owns it. If he's not gonna be allowed to do anything with it, he's probably gonna wanna sell it. Is there somebody else somewhere along the line that would buy it and put a community center in? Or, or a way of getting, is there, does the village board have a way of rallying all of these property owners to put in some money? I don't know.
They're, they're not.
Farfetched, I don't know.
Well, so Neil owns several of the buildings, so you can just call him up, I'm sure. He'd be happy to, you know, just park with this cash.
Yeah.
Well, make it more appealing for his rentals.
I'd find a way to make it a profit center, I don't know.
I feel like, yeah, without, with lack of the staff report and understanding what the ask was, the, the way Evan presented it, and hearing the discussion tonight, if we have to go back to the drawing board, I'd rather have you guys lay it over than say this, you know, than, than say it's all denied.
I guess my question for this board is, is probably a good point. I mean, we're here, right? I mean, have, you have a discussion too, and then bargaining over, then at least you have some direction to next time, to everybody, right? To the village board, to the applicant, to everybody else, about what you're looking for there. Right? Cause this is one of those things where there's not necessarily gonna be an, an exact answer for it. So it's, I mean, if there's any sort of, is there an ask from the ZBA? Do you guys have ideas? I mean, nothing's gonna be completely completed tonight with this.
How far back do we have minutes from meetings?
I think we went through, we could probably, yeah, we get, we probably, I'm sure we have minutes from, a good amount.
Interesting to see what it was intended and how it was presented.
I wasn't here.
And we, do you know that?
I just, I don't have a set of precedent that says, we just don't do anything, and we don't have to follow what we asked or what was required of us.
So if you guys are saying that, let's just project this out and you say, well, if we got rid of this building, we made this interior spa, uh, park space, who, who's, who's maintaining the park? That's something the village would wanna?
Those who already maintain the landscaping and the grounds around the buildings.
Yeah, he would for, for his tenants.
Yeah.
I mean, would the, would, would the village want to say like, well, we'll, we'll create a pocket park here for the whole neighborhood?
There's never going to be a developer-owned community center. And there was never going to be a, there is no association that is going to put, put in a community center. That's the, one of the two ways there would be a community center, correct?
Right.
Neither one of those.
Um, yeah, I can't see all of these owners of these buildings saying that, yeah, we want to create an association now. I don't, I'm not saying it could never happen, but why, why would people voluntarily want to add more government to themselves?
Nor, normally when you buy in, there is an association, and the dues are, when you buy the building, this is a burden you assume.
But you see developments where they have parks and, and uh, green spaces and community spaces that the developer puts in, I mean.
Well, and we require it now, so if they were going to give it now, it would be a requirement.
And does public works maintain those places at this time?
Oh, we do, for, yeah, for new, I mean, new developments in two thousand and, whatever, those are, properties are done into the village. That is park, that's what we have, we have. Um, so you would have that in, in you, it would be a, a village park.
Uh, Mike? Did you, you look like you had something you wanted to say at one point?
I'll comment.
I'll let you guys do your job.
His job is to listen to what you guys recommend, right? And then, and he has this discussion with the board at.
Yeah, we've had board members here, spoke the cases.
For asking.
Thank you, yeah.
I'm generally asking questions for public comments.
We gotta make a recommendation whether we want to send it, rezone it, whether we.
Unless the applicant's asking to lay it over, right? Which I think is what you're asking.
I'm.
We can lay it over. Decision to lay it over.
But what will be the point? I mean, what information will we have?
Well, I guess Laura's got something she's asking for, right? Do you have information you want us to gather, or could pull up, or?
I would like to see the minutes of when we initially, um, zoned it as multifamily, and we agreed to this multifamily development. Because I'm wondering, somebody, this was.
Somebody said something about community centers somewhere along the line.
And I just don't.
I, I said, I said it.
Well, he brought.
I need back that, because he talked about it.
But you don't know that he brought that up back then.
We don't, and that's what I like to see.
How do you know that?
Cause he said it.
Yeah, but he.
It was originally.
I said, I said the plat, I believe the plat shows it as its community lot.
Community lot.
Well, I see that difference, I guess.
Would we want to see?
I'll have to go back and look at, look at the plat as well, uh, from whatever, whatever was recorded, and, you know, verify that, but that, that's my.
I think it would be a good idea for us to have the entire picture, and then revisit the issue.
Would we then want to see, uh, I'm hearing that we want to, would see some sort of justification on one of these things from the applicant then? As well.
If, well, you understand what the problem is. And so you guys can maybe go back to the drawing board and come up with something.
Yeah, I.
Tell us why. Tell us why, why it's appropriate to do it.
Sure.
You, you tell us why, we say yes, yeah, or no.
Okay.
Or we adjust on that.
But honestly, I don't know how you could say that it's insufficient for meaningful recreation when you can put twenty-four units on it. I mean, neither.
I didn't say.
No, no, I know you didn't. I'm, I'm saying, like, I don't see how that's a, that unit is big enough for a park.
Problems was gonna.
No, I totally get that. I would say, if we're coming up with our own reasons why, I don't think that's one of them, in my personal opinion.
And I'm sure there's tons of people that live behind this that love having their dogs poop on this lot, so they don't have to clean it up on their own lot. I mean, I was a dog owner too.
Get that.
But if it, if it was a cornfield, and they moved in there, they can't assume it's gonna be a cornfield forever either. So it's a vacant lot, they can't assume it's gonna be vacant forever either. So, we'll come up with something, just tell us.
Okay, sure.
Tell us, and then we gave us a chance to look at what it was when it was actually plotted.
Yep.
We have a minute, we have a minute to map.
Sounds fine. So.
So let's, let's lay it over, and, um, that would include, I guess, uh, on new business number four. Also.
Yeah.
The two things we have before us for, for this particular on Clearwing, we're doing both at the same time? Well, I'll make a motion to, uh, lay over ZBA twenty twenty-five dash zero zero three and ZBA twenty twenty-five zero zero four.
You made that motion?
I made that motion.
Put something in there, give us a chance to look at the minutes, give it a chance to look at the, the minutes.
I got it. We need a second.
I'll try.
I'll take it, okay.
A motion to lay over so we can get the history of the property a little more in depth. By, uh, Jeremy Durstock, second by number one.
Yes.
Boy, all please. I mean.
Yes.
Legmon.
Yes.
There's that?
Yes.
Yes.
Are you okay with this? You understand what we're, what we're trying to get at here?
I, I, I'm just, I don't begrudge it. I, um, I kinda came in saying like, that, believing that we kind of had, worked through this in, in, at a staff level, and we were moving forward with this plan. And I kind of, I'm, I'm a little bit waylaid by like, oh, now that we have to like, say like, well, oh, you have to, now you have to like, sell it more than just what it is, that I'm thinking, okay, we got a vacant lot here, we want to develop. Um, so, but.
Yeah.
I, I, I understand that. I would ask that the village forward me the staff recommendation so we can understand what we're.
So you, you, you know, you mentioned you didn't know what the staff report looked like and stuff, but we're at the same disadvantage that we don't know what all of the talks were precisely between you guys before it even came here.
Yes.
You know, we, we figure, I guess, that a lot of the negotiations have already taken place, and that by the time it gets to us, it has to make sense.
I think it was always gonna be a hard, and we talked about initially when we first met, I mean, it was always gonna be a hard one with that. The board's ultimately gonna have to make a decision, right, to either allow that plat A, Y A turn into development or not. So that's what this discussion is. I mean, that's, I mean, that's, that's where we're at, I'm at, so. I mean, this is the concept plan that we worked through, they wanted to develop this, but ultimately, you know, it's gonna be up to you guys, up to the village board.
Right. And I, I guess at this point, what we've said is that, no, not like this without more.
Say, we're not saying no, we're saying we need more information.
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah, the more we do, then there's a better chance that the village board will be able to make a decision.
Right.
Oh, ZBA twenty twenty-five dash zero zero five, discussion and recommendation for approval of final plat six of Fox Point subdivision, and you were gonna.
Be again.
Also?
Yeah. Request that maybe Joe gives you guys a kind of a quick background on where we're at and why we're here, um.
Um, I mean, this one, I think you guys know a little bit about this too. This went through a couple of years ago, through design review, through plating, um, through the village, uh, ZBA and village boards. There was a new village board that came on, that was rescinded, the approvals for all this was rescinded. There was some litigation that ensued, and then as part of that, uh, end result of that, there was any sort of agreed upon settlement, um, sort of resolving all the issues, we think, generally resolving the, the design issues, um, which brought us to the design, brought us to this point. Um, um, still has to meet village codes, also meet the village requirements, um, but a general concept, uh, being approved, uh, based on the fire landscaping approvals that you guys approved already, um, as well as the number of, uh, buildings and the type of buildings on the property. So now we're back in, sort of back, bringing this back before you, we have a different set of guidelines, so it's not necessarily the village code exactly, right? It's this agree upon settlement agreement that was put in place, uh, is sort of the structure we're, we're under. Um, and it's going through, I guess, designer view based on, and uh, sort of approval based on, on that.
Can I ask real quick, just because I don't recall who the attorneys were involved with them, just wanna make sure that.
Yeah, not very sure.
Okay.
It was, uh, Tom Lester, uh, for the applicant, or for the applicants, for the Petries. Um, was, um, Anselm Link was the attorney.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't have any kind of a copy.
Yeah.
I have a lot of people at my firm.
Yeah. Yeah. They don't always know, and then, uh, B G H L.
Got it.
What, what was the major key?
That's where I.
Can you summarize everything? Yep.
So, um, this layout plan is, as I understand it, the agreed upon between the village and my client, the agreed upon final revised plan that is all going to be moving forward. The village in this particular case did request a parkland, a park lot. Uh, it moved all up and down this street, um, was settled at being on the far east end, just south of Sparrow Lane. Sparrow Lane would be a public street. Uh, this was as, kind of as it was originally platted and approved. Um, the units on the south side of Sparrow Lane, these lots here are all proposed as duplex units. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight duplex units, so six, 16 homes. So there's a, between the single family residential and the, and the more heavily used multifamily, there is a duplex buffer presented in, in this final settlement plan. Sparrow Lane being a public street, the, um, some of the four family units were oriented to face Sparrow Lane to give it a different variety of a, of a look, as I understand, through some of the negotiations. And then there's this, uh, private road through the back, which has the, the remaining four family units. The, there was a proposed retail lot as, in going back to the original rezoning, that remains as it always was. So that's still available, um. Hopefully somebody comes along and, and is able to pick that up. Um, and so this is the final plan, the units that are here on the north side of Sparrow Lane are actually, actually exactly the same as the sheets I gave you out for the Clearwing. They're slightly smaller than the ones that are currently being built on Hawks Point Trail. But, uh, like I said, the buffer of the duplex lots here was kind of the big, the big thing, plus the parkland. Uh, just as a side note, um, we are nearing, entering into an agreement with the county. They wanted some additional improvements above and beyond what was originally approved, um, back, uh, what was it, two years ago now, I think? Um, 20, well, maybe 2023, yeah, two years ago, um, so we've got, we've got that in the works too, that we're, we'll be doing some extra work, and the county's gonna actually reimburse us for, um, just because they want it all done at the same time. I guess they've got a couple of projects going north and going east on Roscoe Road, and they, they just, from a timing standpoint, they didn't wanna come back a year after we were done and, you know, tear up the road again. So that's really the long and short of it, I, I, like I said, it's, it's all kind of falling in place, um, per the, the agreed upon settlement.
I mean, really, sort of, yeah, this is the, these are normal tonight, I guess, but, or regular, you should see, but say, there's a difference, so really, it's, it's, uh, Brandon and Brandon, our village engineer, and then Evan looking for the zoning stuff, um, making sure that it meets the, the requirements of the agreements, um, make, Brandon making sure it meets the, obviously the drainage requirements, the storm wire.
Yeah.
Um, they all had to be young anyway, it's also required by it, so that's all part of it, and that's what they can, you know, which now, well, showing they've done their reviews of it, but.
We've, we've gone through two rounds of reviews with the village. What they're waiting on is, in order for them to issue their approval, was an approval letter from the county, and I've been bugging the county for that for months, and I just got it today, because I told them I was coming to this meeting, so I actually have it in my packet. I don't need to turn it in to you, but it, it, the, the village, uh, or the county has already, or has finally given me the letter that'll allow the village to approve the public works improvements. I already have a revised sewer permit from sanitary district, and I also have a revised EPA water permit. So really, we're in the final stretch here.
Where's the water?
Yeah, the water power serves right here, just off of the plant. South of the retail lot.
The sidewalks?
Hmm?
Curving, curving gutter sidewalks?
Curving gutter sidewalks on Sparrow Lane, full urban street standards, per your new, you know, your current standards, um, sidewalks on both sides, uh, the mailbox clusters per the post office. The park lot is dedicated as property to the village. We're not doing any development that's on the village.
So the village maintains that?
It's been, it'll be digged over, it has, I think it's already been digged over, but that'll be, that'll be a village-owned parcel, I mean, that new, our new code.
And Evan, just because we haven't seen the settlement agreement, this meets the terms of the settlement agreement?
You're muted, Evan.
Sorry about that, um, yeah, the layout and the buildings and everything meet generally what's in the agreed upon site plan. The landscaping plan actually exceeds what was in the agreed upon plan, so, um, that's even better, so.
There's a burn there, channel, that was a, that was part of the issue too, or not issue, that was one of the items too, like that, sort of a buffer in that southern.
Um.
Or.
There's a landscape buffer, fence, uh, sight screen fence, and that was really as per the original, and so we, we haven't changed that, we've left that all in there.
It was, oh yeah, that was also.
The board has green lighted this, so this is coming through us to get back to the board, as I understand.
Correct, yeah, correct. We're, reason we're bringing it through here is because just to follow our processes and make sure we're just sort of being consistent across the board. I mean, there, there is some review to it, right? It's making, it's, the settlement agreement was, that's the layout, right? So that's the layout we have to go with, you're going with, and then landscaping, that's landscaping layout, that was part of that agreement. But then, really, it's, you know, the engineers and the, and really mostly engineering, honestly, um, to review, make sure it meets our engineering requirements, and that's what you would all go for and what you would do.
You're not additional parking. I just, I don't know if it's appropriate, but I just have a question.
Some parking in the middle.
Oh, heck, please.
But this road here, this private one, is it dead end?
Yeah.
How long is that? It looks.
Well, it loop, it looks, it comes in and loops around. So this dead end is like, um, you know, a hundred and some feet long.
I guess with this, you know, again, with emergency vehicles or public works, you, you'd have to back all the way up. So I guess we had, I guess we, I didn't see this road here when I was sitting there, so that was my only concern.
There's a loop all the way through except for these two ends.
So they just have to back a short distance, so, just for safety.
Yeah, that came up, and that came up during our discussions, I think, different planning.
You gotta have a cul-de-sac or a tee.
Yeah.
To allow.
It, it does loop through.
Yeah, so I, I couldn't see that.
You know, to his question, um, who looks at the road being widened up still for a, a, one of the larger fire trucks to be able to turn onto that? I mean, is that, or is that just automatic when it's built? There's automatically a standard that would allow a large fire truck to turn the corner and go.
I mean, it's, our, we went ahead and engineer review, our engineers looked at it to make sure it meet our standards for the sizes.
Take care of that.
And the radius is, and the turn radius.
Radius, yeah. So they do look at it or already have?
Our engineer, yeah, they've already looked at it.
Okay. All right, I think, um, now, have a motion to approve the final plat?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thanks.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Motion by Bluech, again by me, correct, is that?
Yes.
Um, Legman?
Yes.
Durstock?
Yes.
Bluech?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
The whole business, anybody has questions? Nothing? Public comment?
Uh, I have a question, please, the last item that was approved, goes, what's the next?
Call the board.
The board, yeah.
It's, well, yeah, it'll be, yeah, committing, correct, yeah, for sure.
Okay, I mean, we need attendance.
Um, for the, for the, uh,
Hawks Point.
I, I don't think so, I mean, I'll, I can find out, make sure to the board wants you guys there or not, I don't know if they're gonna want you there or not for the Hawks Point, I'm thinking probably not necessarily, but I will let you know for sure.
Maybe it's closed session, I don't know, but.
It, it shouldn't be anything, I mean.
Need to be there, let me know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I do have a question for you, I noticed the first section of that was started, but moves along very, very slowly next summer, um, or the one next year?
Yeah, the first, well, he's got, uh, he's getting close to having one building completely finished. And, uh, in fact, we're talking to Evan about how we could, uh, present a condominium plat of some sort, so that each unit can be sold as an individual ownership, not rental. Um, I think it'll go faster this year, it took a while for him to get his electric, the electric company in there, to do their work. Um, all the foundations are in, so it's really just a matter of getting the carpenters throwing up, throwing up units, but the, for sure, one is pretty, getting pretty close. So he should be, yeah, he want, he actually said that he wanted to put, put one for sale, actually.
Okay.
Very soon, so we're trying to work through some details of how to make it a, um, condo plat, townhome plat. So, um, I think that was everybody's desire that these would, could be sold and be individual ownership as opposed to rentals, so we're trying to go that route. There's some laws in the goofy laws with, uh, Freddie Mac and Fannie Mae, like, you know, what, what they give loans for, not necessarily a condo, but a townhome, that, yes, and so we're working, we're working on that, in fact, uh, just, since you asked the question, Joe, um, Josh Petrie kind of basically authorized me to come up with a one lot townhome plat and get it in front of you guys to see how it, how it works. I think I did talk to Evan, we didn't really have any village standard on that to go by, so we're just gonna start one and.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we can talk about, yeah, or what the village needs to approve, I suppose, for the.
That'd be like a zero lot line.
Oh, I got, oh, I see, yeah, for those, okay, yeah.
Like in four mini lots, if you wanna call it that.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah. Uh, no public comment? Well, I guess like, we were sort of, before we got that, is there public comment?
I have public comment.
Okay, um, if you want to just state your name, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, yeah, say your name, oh, is it, I think this is.
Mike's.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Mike.
Say your name and, I just know.
Yeah, Mike Sima, seven, four, eight, two, Deer Crossing. First of all, I want to thank the, the Petries and also the, uh, ZBA on these, on these decisions, uh, it's nice to sit in on these. I don't want the irony to be lost that we are approving or going down the road to approve a subdivision in Hawks Point plat that will have public space. And that's an agreement that we are entering into in good faith and saying that, you know what, 20 years down the road, we're not gonna have this sold and have more development in there because it's, nothing's done with it. The, uh, Clearwing, that property would never be a community center as long as the Petries own it, I don't think, how, how would there be an opportunity for anyone to do anything with it? Um, what the Petries could do is potentially donate that lot to the village, uh, for green space. But that's something we should consider because this is the precedent that we're sitting with here. Once we start saying that because there's not housing, or there's, uh, you know, there's lack of space, there was never, you know, that opportunity because it was owned by a private entity, so I just want to leave you with that thought, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public? I think there are about six. I was, uh, it was like Mike Sima, at least that, public, anyone who participates.
Okay. All right, yeah, good points. Need a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Second.
All right, Joe. Durstock?
Yes.
Bluech? Me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Always good bet, Petrie sweetheart. There was everything that comes off.